I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Constitution of the United States, for whose we stand, one nation, under God, in thy name, the Lord. Let us continue our best in this.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to.
Police Department.
You've been township planning commission. July fifth, two thousand twenty-three. I just want to make a note that this is being recorded and Zoom. There we will not take questions through Zoom. You have to be in the audience to have questions answered. Then with that, uh, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of our March? First meeting. If they have, it's, uh, do I have a motion?
I move that we, uh, approve the minutes as written.
And the second. Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry. All right, we'll start the evening. With Rumina.
Romano.
I'm sorry.
Terrible Romano.
Romano. Three thirty-nine West Euclid Avenue zoning change recommendation request. How you doing tonight?
Good, good, thank you. Um, yes, my name is Jack Robinson here with JMR Engineering. Uh, for Mr. Lou Romano. And this is his property, uh, located on Route one thirteen, rest is right across from. Webb Road, which is actually an east. Town Township, if you're familiar, this is to the, this property is located to the west of the car wash, if you're familiar. And also west of the new Euclid Hills School. And it's also, it's to the east of the existing, um, mini storage that is already on one thirteen. And tonight, we're really, tonight, we're, we're here to discuss. A zoning change request, and I think I spoke with some of you before about this job, uh, in general. We have some variance relief as well, but the first thing first is, is, is a zoning request. And the property I mentioned to the west, which is that larger mini storage to the west. Uh, that actually was rezoned and what we're asking for is really the same thing. So. I, I understand from the zoning officer that that was rezoned. Thirty, twenty to thirty years ago, and they have the same exact condition that we have. They have a, uh, PC zoning district in front. And an R one zoning district in the back, so it just cuts right across both of these properties. The funny thing is that like the zoning map still shows both that way. But the entire property to the west is all, is now all PC. Um, it just doesn't, it's not reflected on the zoning map, though. Um, so we're asking for the same thing, and actually it's the same proposal. Uh, we're asking for the site to be rezoned PC. Uh, in its entirety as well as. Uh. The proposal will be a mini storage, uh, building as well, similar to the other. Now, the, this one will we. And I can get into the details, but this will be a much smaller footprint. The, the property to the west is much more conducive. We are really developing, as you can see on the plan, very little of the property due to steep slopes and, and, and sanitary sewer. Uh, that comes diagonally across the property. There's some. Conditions that really warrant just a narrower, smaller footprint. So we were go, looking to go vertical. Uh, for this property, and I have a three-story building. The. Mini storage to the west is all, I think, pretty much one story and. Majority of the property is covered with it, so. Same use, but a little bit different arrangement. And I can get into the variance relief if you'd like, but really the, the, the main thing is, is the zoning change relief that we need to get to first for this property.
Um, my only question didn't have to do with the zoning change, but you're coming out on. One thirteen, so you got to get a driveway permit and all that through Penn Dot, right?
Correct, yes. So we spoke, we spoke with East County, East County will, will, will defer. To Euclid in, for the approval process and really. Um, which will make things much more simple because there's very, very little, it's down to a few hundred square feet that are in. Uh, East County Township, it's a very small area.
Right.
Are there currently homes backed up to the lot?
No, there's, everything is surrounded by the school district property, even though it's residential to the north and east. Maybe town has on, and I. Yeah, on the aerial, it's, it's all school district. It's, 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 it's all, all zone residential, but there's no houses. It's all school district property. If you remember, you, I mean, school district, it's actually two different lots, but. If any of you remember the, they run the tough, their, their little mutter, and it goes through those woods, yes, so. That's where they, that's what, that's, that's pretty much what those woods have been used for.
You're looking three stories, is that what you said?
Yes, that's one of the zoning relief because the ordinance allows thirty-five feet, but or two and a half stories. And we'd like to get three. Because we are keeping the footprint small. Initially, when we laid this thing out, we actually had two buildings, one, one where the, I showed the one and then one opposite in the front. But the, the, the front has steep slopes and it's just, it's not worth building a slab built type style building in the front. I think it's, it's, it's gets too much disturbance and we looked at it, it just doesn't make sense. So it just be, it would be better, more, more cost effective just to go one more story and have that storage all in one spot to the back.
Less impervious and everything.
For sure, and it'll be in the back. I don't know how much you're gonna see this.
That's tough to fit three-story storage in thirty-five feet.
Uh.
It'd be tight.
Well, I just say, I think, I walk, I'm gonna have to talk to his architect to see if he needs any relief on that, if he wants a couple more feet or not. I mean, you know, when you have a slab structure. Ten feet each story, and if it's a flat roof, maybe just some equipment up there, maybe they can make it work. I need to discuss that with my client.
Right.
Not to speak.
I like the, I like the low impact part of it. This is smaller footprint.
I don't even know if you're gonna see this either very well because it's so far back off the road, too.
Right, right. That's the other thing, yeah, it's perfect. It's like, it's perfect to go vertical back there, nobody cares.
It's interesting they didn't rezone both. They just rezoned the one, but I guess that's all, that's all that was requested, but. Uh, it's really the identical situation where it was, that was had.
Like from a buffer standpoint against the school, just. How tall is the school?
I don't know how tall it is.
I mean, two stories, but. They're like directly looking into classrooms or like.
What the exactly.
Okay, so it's definitely lower than.
Elevation wise, uh, Jack, do you know what they are for the difference? Elevate, elevation, maybe territory, switch of their plans?
Yeah.
And let's look.
What's the, uh?
Hmm. Have it printed out.
Dropping, it's dropping, it's going uphill to the school or downhill?
Uh, it's uphill.
So it's to go to the school, so they sit below the, below.
Yeah, and it looks like there's some eyeball here, we're, I mean, about. Ten feet below, um, there are two-foot contours, I believe, and there was a screen to the west, so it all comes down from the school through the site. To that creek. So.
Let's reschedule.
Thank you.
So this sketch plan, maybe you buy EB Walsh, but it's. So there's so much stuff in here that is just like.
That would be one of my questions, is just buffer wise, like landscape or. Something separating the school. The school property from this property from a.
Visibility.
Visibility and, um. Security or.
Yeah, there's existing vegetation that would be saved. There's a tree line that we, that's just a rough tree line as shown there, um. And what I'm looking at my plan is that the, the contour to the east, to the, to the right side of the plan, the most is five hundred. And we have a first floor four eighty-eight, so I guess we're twelve feet below on first floor to there. If I had to guess, the school district probably up a couple of, a couple more feet, so we're probably fourteen feet off their first floor down, lower.
I'm just, I'm trying to remember, obviously, the old school, all the activities were in the back, so students were playing in the back, but I think with the new school, there's not. Student activity back there, correct?
Everything's in the front.
Everything's in here. In the back, so there's no, there would be no school students who would be outside while you've got traffic going in and out of the storage, right?
Now you can see them up there.
Okay.
Right now, all the properties on one fifteen are zone PC. This is zone PC. Really, they would just be moving the line here.
Mm-hmm.
So it's the back portion, the back portion of the property is. Residential.
Is residential, yeah.
It, we didn't have a lot of time to review this, Dan, is there any, are there any things we should be concerned with in this plan?
I, I mean, they, they have to go through full land development, they gotta get variance requests. Right now, you're just looking at from, I mean, I did a review of a, a sketch plan review of this. Back in March, I outlined some of the, some of the stuff that they need to deal with, with going through the approval process.
Right.
But for tonight, it's just a matter of you're looking at rezoning. To allow for a different use, and the rest of the items are gonna have plenty of time to chat about with, with regards to planning and buffering and all that. So those are parts.
So the question to us is just the rezoning for today?
That's, that's all that you're here to talk about tonight is.
Okay. So what is, what is your overall high cover zone going to be?
Actually, so what it'd be is rezoning, they gotta go through conditional use, they gotta get variances and then land development. So you're gonna probably sick with tyranny and Jack here.
Every, every step. We're hitting every, uh.
Yes, and ZHB reitem. Just to, does it have to go to zoning hearing board or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It, the zoning hearing board is effectively set back. In building height.
What, what is the actual height of the building going to be from, from grade, not. Located on the property, the actual. From at the ground floor zero. What's the highest point of the building gonna be?
I, I'm gonna have this review of my client, I mean, he's saying three stories, which I think might be in the, in the, in the thirty, up mid to upper thirties of foot wide.
I was just curious.
It's gonna depend on, you know, how, how the architecture of the building is. I'm saying if it had ten-foot stories, we'd have three. Plus, uh, because, you know, these are flat, flat, but flat. Slab buildings with a flat roof, it's not gonna be a pitched roof as far as I know.
Okay.
So, um, and then the other, the other relief that we were gonna need for the zoning hearing board is building setback, and. That's really more, more to the, under the, the unique circumstances, we have to have a hundred-foot setback from residential district, but. There's no residential actual uses, but you still have to ask for it, though. You don't, you know, you can't just go by the actual use, you, you still need to get the relief.
Okay, I think Lindsay kind of landed on a really important piece, and that is, I, I don't know what the classroom visibility is on the back of the school, but. If you're fourteen feet down and you, you're shooting for thirty-five feet. You know, you're twenty feet in the air. And right now, the visibility, if there's a line of windows at the back of that school, these kids have been looking at trees. And now they're gonna be looking at the side of a building, so I think what would be cool is if you guys. Came up with a scheme to do not just a single line, sometimes a buffer line is sort of ridiculous. But if you actually came up with a landscape plan that. You know, was, had a certain depth to it, it would actually block visibility, then it would be, then I think it would be great.
I think we'll be looking to keep what we keep what's there and add to it from thinking, you know, because there'll be so much more stuff that's already there. And then add what we can, yeah.
As long as that's intact, yeah, like it doesn't need to be removed, removed for construction or removed.
But that's something we work on as we move forward with this.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah. So tonight, we just need to decide if we wanna let him, if we think it's good to do the zoning change. So.
All right. Well. Should I do it?
Yeah.
All right, do, can I make a motion?
Yeah.
Right?
Is everybody in agreement if we make a recommendation?
Yeah. Okay, I move that we, that we recommend the zoning change. To allow the entire property to be rezoned. PC commercial, a planned commercial pursuant to the EB Walsh letter dated March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
With that, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Post? All right. You gotta, you got your first screen.
Step one, thank you.
All right. Second, we have Calvary Chapel of Chester Springs. Two seventeen, two nineteen, two twenty-one, Dallin Forge Road, zoning change.
Good evening, my name is Ari Christakis, I'm with Buckley Bryan, I'm here tonight on behalf of Calvary Chapel. Um, with me tonight is Patrick Chris Swanson and Andy Davis, who has been overseeing this on behalf of the congregation. Uh, they're here to answer any of your questions, and I, I want to thank Jack for teeing up our application so well. We are asking for. Similar sort of change to Calvary Chapel's parcel in the PC slash R one district. Um, what you'll see on the screen now, uh, on the right side of the parcel is the dividing line between the PC district and the R one district. Just to orient you, that's Dallin Forge Road to the south. Eagleview Boulevard is off to the right, off plan. Um, the Chick-fil-A is just. To the, uh, to the e, uh, east. Targets to the south, and there's a shopping center to the north. There are residential homes to the, uh, to the west. In fact, the church recently acquired two of those parcels, uh, and its plan is to expand the church use over those parcels primarily for parking. Um, there's a chance we may attempt to locate a maintenance building somewhere in that area as well. This is a conceptual plan purely so you understand kind of. The scale of what we might be able to accomplish there. Um. You know, as Dan alluded to earlier, this project will have to go through, uh, certainly at least a modification of the two thousand and five conditional use decision that Dan alluded to in his letter. Uh, which authorized Calvary Chapel's use of the existing parcel. Uh, that big green rectangular building you see is existing, that's at two seventeen Dallin Forge Road. Uh, the two parcels to the west. Are, uh, two nineteen and two twenty-one Dallin Forge Road. Again, those were residential parcels. My understanding is that they were recently subdivided from one another, I'm not really clear why. Um, but the church's intention would be to take all of these parcels. Uh, consolidate all of them into one lot. Uh, that's easier for the congregation to manage on an ongoing basis, and what we would ask is that we apply the PC zoning, which. The Board of Supervisors already applied to all of two seventeen Dallin Forge, to all of those parcels as consolidated, if that makes sense. So, uh, so this would be the church parcel going forward, it would be their kind of permanent home. Uh, and it would afford them the, the space that they need to accommodate kind of a growing and vibrant, uh, faith community, so, um. You know, we're happy to answer your questions, we don't think that there's any reason not to proceed like this. One of the things that I would mention is. We're aware of the hundred-foot buffer requirement to the residential zone to the west. Uh, there's an existing sort of mature, mature tree buffer line along that property boundary, which we would intend to keep. Uh, and probably reinforce with additional buffering. Um, a, as Mr. Hessler said, having some depth. To that buffer matters for visual and sound knockdown purposes, so. Uh, so that's something we would look to preserve to the extent possible. Also, I'll just mention. We, we understand there's an issue about the driveway and where that's gonna be located, that's something we'll have to explore with the township and with Penn Dot going forward. Uh, what that alignment will ultimately look like, there are probably a couple dozen ways to skin that cat. Um, we'll have to develop that further during land development or the conditional use proceedings. Um. Traffic, similar kind of situation, we would expect to provide some sort of trip generation summary or something along those lines, uh, as part of conditional use. So, uh, that's kind of the overview of the, the plan and the project and our request, uh, which is to rezone basically everything that you see on the plan to PC. Um, everything right of that dashed line is already PC, we're just asking to extend it over the other, uh, the remainder of the parcels. So, uh, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
How many parking spots do you plan to add?
So we haven't decided yet, uh, the, they're currently, let me check my notes and make sure I tell you the right number. We've currently got. Three hundred and twenty-one spaces on the site that accommodates. One thousand two hundred and eighty-four seats inside the sanctuary, uh, and that's pursuant to the two thousand and five conditional use approval. Obviously, to the extent we modify that approval, that's a conditional use proceeding. If we decide to add. Uh, I, I gather more than two hundred additional parking spaces, that would be a separate conditional use request under your zoning ordinance.
Why do you have to have parking spaces? Are you planning on adding one?
No, it's a growing, it's a growing church, frankly, um, and that. The parking is probably too low for the current attendance that they have at the church. If at some point in the, in the future, the church continues to grow, yes, they will need to probably expand the sanctuary, and that additional parking could help facilitate that. Uh, but there's, you know, there's no specific plan at this point, and if one does come to fruition, we present it during land development, the conditional use proceedings.
Right. So that was gonna be my question, right now, you're running out of. Parking spaces, how many services are you seeing? You know, on Sunday, or, so is it really just Sundays that there's not enough parking or, you know, creating more opportunities for less density?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll have, uh, Pastor Chris come up and explain a little bit about the programs. My understanding, though, is that during the week. There's enough parking for the weekday activities that go on at the church, it, it's primarily on Sundays during the services, uh, which they have several. Um, that it can be somewhat of a problem getting everybody parked, so it's primarily a Sunday problem, um, but, you know, obviously, to the extent that the church continues to grow. It's just gonna exacerbate that problem, and this additional space helps alleviate it.
Yeah, and I'm wondering if there's other ways to stagger, you know, that doesn't require more parking.
Sure, sure.
If there are other things that were explored.
What you'll find, uh, most of us in the room remember when we had one phone number in our house, and the phone was stuck to the wall. And what we've seen over time is families, as they grow, tend to add more cars, it's a function of where we are now, where instead of four people in one car, we've got. Two or three cars per family, so that has increased. And that wasn't the same case back in two thousand and six when we built the first building. The church is growing. Uh, parking is always a problem, and part of the reason we want to get relief is we don't want them to start, you know, ebbing out into the other buildings and other properties that are around us. And so we've been talking to the Fickers over the years and said, when you guys want to move, let us know. And out of the blue, we got a call in February. So here we are, so basically, we are, we haven't even basically figured out what we're doing, we know we need parking. And the first thing we have to figure out is what's our zoning? And so that's, our zoning isn't changing much in that Mr. Ficker was our neighbor since two thousand and six, so we've been next to residential. All we're doing is now we've got residential one further hop. Now at least we've got the mature trees that are on the two parcels that Ficker divided. And our neighbor is Target, and our other neighbor is basically Taco Mile in the shopping center behind us, so we really are pretty much just in a commercial zone except for one neighbor on our western side. We've already talked to them, saying, look, we know we're gonna make some changes, we'll work with you, help us the best you can. Uh, but what we need to do is increase parking and essentially figure out how much can we use on that land, so as we grow, we can figure out what can we build. Our second service is the biggest, we already have three services, and we've staggered them out and we do the best we can to make that easier. During the week, our parking is perfect, it's fine. But it's Sunday second service when everybody wants to come at one time.
Okay, thank you.
We have a good problem.
It's a good problem.
Absolutely. Um, I, I just need some clarification, um, from maybe our group, um. So if a church has approved use of R one, like for, um. For parking and accessory, um. Ex, I don't know what accessory, something, I forget what the word is.
Accessory use.
Accessory use.
The accessory use is permitted in the R one or the.
Or church, okay, so what's the need to, to rezone if they can use accessory? Um, use for an R one as a church?
Um, I, I, I wouldn't mind asking Ari what he was thinking about this, um, I mean, the way I see it here, the, the differences are, you have. Um, a different amount of impervious coverage, um, the, as noted in my review letter here.
Yeah.
Um, in the R one, they can do a maximum of forty percent impervious coverage. Um, if it stays R one, and the PC, they can go a maximum of sixty-five percent, so it does allow them to increase that impervious coverage. Uh, which they may or may not need with the green space that they have. Um, the R one district would allow them only to make that a twenty-foot side yard setback. By changing to the, in city, they're actually requiring a hundred-foot setback to the west. So that's a benefit here for the neighbor to the west.
And I think what you're trying to say is, we'd rather if we have expansion, consolidate it to the right of the property and stay away from the neighbors. But if we're at the smaller number, then we have to be on that side, we want to put everything we do this way. Towards a commercial, so that's really the idea, we want to shift it onto the existing plot.
Sure. It, it, it creates a, a large PC zoning district, if, if anything should happen to the church or the church wasn't there, it creates a beautiful big lot for.
Correct.
PC in the future.
If the church is, the, the PC zoning district would stay with this plot.
Correct.
And it could basically be whatever was, um, permitted, uh, permitted use within the PC.
So there are two of us. That, the products are making the application, one is, um, a, as Dan alluded to. By allowing it to go to the higher impervious coverage limit, we can stay away from bar on that side, that, that's an important feature. The other is, this, this is an institution use, right? It's not really, it's more like. The commercial uses on Eagle View Boulevard from a massing, size, aesthetics, parking, all of that. It's closer to that use than it is the residential use. West, so we thought it was appropriate to combine uses. The third consideration, which is important because this is a church, um. This has to be managed by its members on an ongoing basis, and while the church was kind enough to come hire my law firm to figure out how to cut this up now. They really like to avoid having to do that in the future. Having the same zoning applied uniformly can be a personal. Makes it easier for the church to administer themselves going forward, twenty, thirty years down the line. When you're, when you're, I mean, you would need to really recite your company. Have a consistent zoning just in status, easier. For them to kind of go off the plan, you know, anyway.
Based on her question, and I, and I, I get back to that, and she made a very good point, was that. By changing the zoning, you've also taken the limits off of the woodland disturbance. So should the usage ever change, that woodland disturbance, they can clear cut that to the property line. Under the zoning, that would be horrific now, understanding that. The township engineer has recommended. And we put some limitations on that. Create a buffer, we have to make sure that you're amenable to that.
Sure, yeah, and as I said, we, we intend to maintain the buffer that's there and augment it so that there is effective buffering. We don't. We don't want to interfere with the residential use to the west, we want that to be its own kind of sacred area, separate and apart from our sacred area.
Yeah.
So, um, so what we'd like to do is, is maintain that buffer, and obviously, as it comes through conditional use. Potentially land development as well, that could be a condition.
But Dan, does that restriction reside with that property impermeability?
Um, so when it's rezoned, they're all asking right now, regulation about the rezoning, so, um, it would be during the conditional use phase of the project here, where you. Put a condition on the, on the approval. That would require them to have a permitted buffer, landscape buffer, that's where that would come into play. If the church, um, decided to move because it got too big for this space and decided to sell this. That condition goes with the use being approved, it doesn't go with the zoning. So unless, um, um, unless there was some type of permanent. Ease mix for a buffer in that area, created into the project here, that would stay with the property, then, 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 then no. If it, it became a different use, then someone could come back through and not. Not, uh, remove that.
Okay.
So one other approach that we could take here would be, um. Well, first off, I'll just point out, as Dan went to earlier, any sort of substantial use of this parcel, you know, it's gonna end up being like a six or seven acre parcel. Any substantial use is gonna require a further conditional use approval on your current ordinance, so, uh. The next user, if the church were to go out of business. Would be right back here before the planning commission, asking for a recommendation on their conditional use application for whatever use happened to come up in the future.
Yeah.
And if it was, if it was a, you know, a, a compatible use with the residential. Perhaps the buffer would be necessary, it's hard for me to imagine what that use might be, but what I would say is that the, the township would have the opportunity to reimpose that condition on a future and, and. At that time, so that, that's the first part. I'd have to talk to my client about whether they would entertain an easement along that, that line, given their interest in remaining in the property. I, I don't know what their intention would be in longer term that way. Uh, it could be something that we'd want to do, but we'd want to look at it carefully because it would affect the value at resale, uh, if the church ever were going to move. We'd want to make sure that there was an appropriate mechanism in place that protects the township and protects the church.
But I understand we're entrusted on making sure the property is done properly now, not relying on future. Township and clinic commissions for that. So let's make sure we get it right now, on.
When you guys back to two thousand and five, you had asked for landscaping and other things to offer the Fickers, which we did.
Sure.
So.
And they did, they did, they did their job then, I'm trying to do our job now and continue on.
Certainly.
Goes. Thank you.
Eric, could you, could you, well, there's also a fifty-foot wide easement running along the parallel to that, to that, I guess, west side there, yeah, um.
I'm not entirely sure why the township insisted as one of the parties on that.
Um. That was a r, 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 what that was, when a r, r was subdividing that, I believe. Okay.
Yeah, so you can. So maybe having to achieve. Sort of a, since I have a little rear parcel by other means, not much. But that would be a change.
But that piece behind it that's leading to there is leading back to the shops.
That's right, the shops.
Correct. And that fifty foot isn't, are they, are they a party to that?
No. By that.
Yeah.
Dan. If they were granted the, uh.
Dan, if they were granted the uh zoning change and they wanted to put the parking in, do they need to do an, a, a conditional use to put the parking in? They can't just go ahead and get the zone change and now they're allowed to go sixty five percent on impervious and do the, the, right? They still have to do.
So we, we interpreted that we discussed this because right now they're showing two hundred and seven new spaces. Anything over two hundred spaces requires a conditional use.
Okay.
But if they turn around and said, oh, we want to be worried about this and make this a hundred and ninety nine spaces, they, they receive conditional use approval for this church. It was our opinion here that they need to amend that conditional use in order to allow for this additional parking. So we believe if they put in ten spaces or if they put in a two hundred and seven spaces, they're coming back through the condit- conditional use phases, what we, we discussed and felt that was, would be our interpretation of that process.
And then I would just recommend that if that happens, then one of the mandates is that there's a stormwater, you know, impact assessment for the region. Right? As far, as part of that.
Yeah, I mean, as part of that, they, they are required to comply with the, your current stormwater. So that, that's a given that that has to be applied for and, 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 and processed accordingly here.
I, I'm just a little confused on th- this chart here. This was the two thousand and five.
That was probably the original approved plan.
Approval plan. So they, so the building, the, the parking is scaled to the, what the pil- what the building can handle. Or has seating, so that so we, we originally approved this for or the building can, can accommodate one thousand two hundred and eighty four parking.
Seats, one, one hundred and eighty four seats.
Seats, which would be three hundred and twenty one spots. So that's, so that's why we're seeing this now, this two hundred, because they're growing.
And they're adding more. Sanctuary holds eight hundred right now.
It holds eight hundred.
We're not even, we're not even maxed out to that number and parking is already a problem where people can't find an open space. So parking is always, you can't solve parking. You can't bother with anything else in the building in the future.
Just trying to get my head around how the, how we.
So you, so I mean.
Parking, yeah.
Yeah, what, what ended up happening here is just, just as, as, as the applicant has indicated. I mean, you go to, you go to, you go to mass on, on Sunday morning, you're bringing you and your two kids and, and that's, and that's why that's the parking requirements were of one space for every uh, for permanent or temporary seats. Um, is what should end up happening. So there, they were, the ordinance was was put in mind here that you're not driving. If four people are coming to, to mass together, you're not driving four separate cars.
I think I understand now. Thanks. Okay.
Okay.
So, so, so just, just to recap here, i- it, looking at this, I mean, other than the change in, in pervious coverage here, which is the, one of the big kickers here for this. I mean, they, they could expand this parking lot without rezoning it. I mean, the, when this was approved back, um, the original approval for this, they looked at this site as all a PC district here was determined at that point with the, the, the past staff that, that uh, this property would be uh, done underneath the PC district. If they, if this wasn't approved through this process, um, they would, um, they could still proceed forward with this uh, underneath the R one residential district. It just makes things a little bit complicated from a uh, from, I mean, so you're having R one districts on half the site, PC district on the other half of the site. And it was kind of our opinion here from a staff point of view here, it'd be nice to clean that all up for this, for this use, then also to, to, to have that hundred foot buffer incorporated into protective property to the west. Um. So I mean, because right now, if the, if, if you guys and supervisors, decision makers here said, no, we would rather leave this R one because you're afraid of what's going to happen in the future. I mean, I believe they could still proceed forward with what they're doing. We're just going to have to maybe, I don't know if they've done an appropriate coverage calc and determined how much that, what that difference makes between the sixty five and the forty percent. Um, the coverage is here, I think that's more than sixty and.
Yeah, that's right.
Sixty five and forty. Um, so they would just have to potentially scale back, um, and maybe, maybe they're already at, uh, maybe that's, maybe they, they will need that. I don't know. Have you looked at the sketch or what's that?
Versus sixty percent overall on the site. Uh, so it, that's not a per household, we already have this kind of simplified and easy for the church to manage in the future. Uh, but obviously that's planning consideration, the commission is kicking into account.
But it gets you, you, you basically have a path to get to the, the same impervious coverage if you did that route.
Well, about twenty percent less.
If you stay R one, you're still met, yeah, you have to stick it, but there's just forty percent on both.
But you're, you're saying you would treat it as two separate tracks. And then you would go basically forty plus forty.
Yeah.
So you would create more impervious, so you would go to eighty percent instead of sixty five. That's how you would say you treat it.
Well, no.
Oh, it's fur, it's fur trap.
We would.
Right.
So it, it, it was all, I don't think you'd end up with more in this coverage, frankly, at the end of the day. But I think we'd end up with parking much closer to the, the other side of the lot. Not bound by a hundred. Maybe having a twenty. So uh, again, I don't think that we'd end up with more parking. We'd end up with less parking.
And if I may, correct me if I'm wrong, at least as if we get the PC sixty five percent, it lets us shift what we want to do towards where we have the density. It leaves us the green space towards our neighbor.
Yeah.
That's the idea. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to put it back towards our main plot. But if we can incorporate the two, then we have to develop that as.
It feels like the best thing would be, uh, it's really not about the percentage. It's really about the impact study. It feels like the best thing to do would be to actually see what's best there. What's going to be the best result for stormwater? Because that's all we're talking about here.
Oh, yeah.
Right? I mean, I mean, I agree with you that it makes sense to have a larger buffer zone, move everything. But not if, not if that means, you know, you never, you just don't know until you put an engineer studying on. Then you could know which one actually. Then you can make a decision at least know, okay, this path has, has a greater, you know, impact and also could also result in cost for them too, that they're not thinking about. You know, if the impacts, if the, if the impact study shows that the path you want is actually going to require you to, to dump, you know, fifty grand or more.
So we have some, we've already done a recharge bed in our current plot. So we've already been exposed the idea of trying to make sure we can manage the, the stormwater as well as get some usable grass out of it. So that, that's not all that intimidating to us because it just has to comply. That's all.
Right.
So, and then I'm, I'm trying to still understand this. So your point about um, as a PC, you can eliminate some of the space between, get the spots closer and the impervious surface closer to the building. So the spots can be closer to.
Future expansion. It lets us put it this way towards the existing buildings.
So couldn't you apply for variance there instead of, and do, uh, you know, instead of the hundred feet setback, you're, you're saying you, you're bound to the hundred feet. So we couldn't get as close to the building because of the R one designation. So we.
It means we have to go closer to the existing residential without the PC. If we have PC, we can shift this way for future.
The setback requirement.
Correct.
Couldn't that be applied for in conditional use, a setback or no?
It takes more of our pervious.
Or variance, if not.
I don't see a hardship occurring and that, that's one of the standards that we have to meet under considering what is what's, what's the actual hardship and why is it unique to this property? I would venture to say that it cracked anybody who just had another applicant saying that their parcel is hacked in and out. There are lots of.
Well, in our case, we're surrounded in a letter C basically with all, all resident, our commercial. We have one exposure residential.
So, so the point is with the rational and VC zones is one, it is easier to register. Two, it lets us basically develop a parking lot in a consolidated way, closer to the other course existing use and away from the residential, which is probably the most.
Any other questions? Or comments from anyone? What's everybody's feeling? I, my feeling is I think we should uh, make a recommendation to approve it to let it all go PC. Uh, I like the hundred foot setback. Uh, and then this is just the, this, they're just putting the foot in the door. So we have a lot of ways of putting restrictions on them as we go.
And we essentially gave you what's the worst case scenario for parking. In other words, that's, that's the max. And we're not sure we're going to build all that, but we had to give you something to look at and explain our case.
So.
Yeah, I'm not there yet and I don't know if it's me continuing, you know, uh, like wanting to have further discussion because I do see it as a six to seven acre parcel that's appealing. You know, as a PC, so continue. And then yes, it only has exposure on one side and then it continues to only have exposure on one side. So I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to, I have a whole list of questions and I'm trying to ask some of those questions to help me understand it. But I'm, I'm not there yet. That's your answer. My, I am, that's.
Ask the questions and we, you know.
So it, I think one of the things was sixty five, it's sixty five percent increase in parking. Um, what is the increase of impervious surface as a PC?
So I know.
Well, it's forty five is R one, it's sixty five is PC.
Right. I guess I thought in here it said there, you were trying to uh, expand parking by sixty five percent.
So that would be if it out, based on the phenomenal statistics and the, you know, concept.
Total of five hundred and twenty three spaces. Three sixteen to two oh seven, or three sixteen plus two oh seven.
And so for the parcel in question, what we're looking to do is use that as a parking offset. Really only Sunday second services where it's going to get its primary hit. Possibly a maintenance building that we would have there for snow removal equipment, whatever the case may be, but that's not very big as well. Really what we're looking for is eventually parking for the current problem now, but then again, in the future, if we've got to add on to the current building, it gives us the impervious to do that with the parking. It all comes down to how many spots do you have? And this is what we went through in two thousand and five. So once, as I said, we used to have a house where you only had one phone on the wall. Now you have people come to church or mass. Unfortunately, once those kids start driving, we're in a very affluent area and a lot of them bring several vehicles or they stay and they volunteer. Because we have three services of Sunday school, three services of nursery. So people will come to one service and then volunteer for another. And so we have cars that are here for basically the support of the ministry. So that has expanded, whereas when we started, we had less of that footprint. That has expanded the demand of parking.
I, I have to just say, I, I totally understand why and the growth, but I have to say that the problem, the, the, the problematic part of it, and I'll probably vote to just go ahead and have you do it, but I just want to say that the problematic part is that the people that are coming to church and bringing four cars for one family are making decisions that are going to impact the rest of us. And then you, you actually only need the parking for one day a week.
Yeah.
That means you have concrete in the ground, keeping things from actually working the way they're supposed to be. And you're adding to the problem so that you can have parking for one service on Sunday. That's my problem with it, but again, there's so much concrete in this area that it doesn't seem like that's really that big of a deal, but I feel like I have to say that is problematic.
Sure, and there's someone from.
Congregation should be thinking about that as well. That's a carbon footprint that is like that twofold. Right? You have four people or three cars from one family coming to church. I don't get it. But.
And I think there's ways that it could be encourage uh, the congregation, like there's no sidewalk on your side to make it walkable for folks or a crosswalk that folks could walk on against Target Park and cross to, to make it walkable or bikeable for any members of the congregation. So are there things that can be done to encourage?
Like multi-use of parking spots, you know, would be kind of awesome, right? I mean, like, we could actually act like a community and like, you know, find uses for concrete.
You notice I'm not arguing, but.
I know, and I understand, you know, you're, yeah, I, I, I get the problem, but.
Lindsay, are you also concerned that, where I think another concern would be if it's not a church in the future.
Yeah, that's a major concern of mine. I mean, we.
Now you have a much more attractive property.
Can't you folks put in some kind of condition that if it changes from being a religious use, then it has to come before the board and you determine what they can do? Can't you simply put that in agreement?
I don't.
We don't plan to go anywhere. We've tried to mitigate parking by planting churches in New Holland, Honeybrook, Pottstown, and also um, oh, I can't remember the last one. We've sent four different churches out. That's helped us with parking. When you take a bunch of people and they leave and do a local church. So our, our goal is not to become the amoeba that takes over Eagleville Boulevard.
You can understand our concern about, you know, about, you know, we, we open it up to other, other things.
So why don't you restrict that if the building sold?
As, as a lawyer, is that possible that we can, I mean, this board can't, we're just an advisory board.
Sure.
But is that possible that a further board zoning board, you know, can put that?
If you have easements, you've got to figure out a way to say, hey, you have to come appear to us with what your plans are. We're not planning to go anywhere, God willing.
This doesn't sound like it. You're.
We have a great, but I think for the purpose today, tonight is that they, they need this parking to accommodate their surfaces.
Well, the goal is to get away from the neighbors is what we're trying to do.
And, yeah, this.
I like that. I like the, the part that makes me lean back and say, I think it makes sense is the hundred foot buffer.
Yeah.
Right. I do like that.
And, and leaving the trees that are there, that is the goal. We want to leave as much of those as possible.
And you said augment. But, but they're not.
Did you have other questions? Because I don't want to leave you feeling that you didn't get your answers.
Questions, but I, I'm not sure they're going to be answered fully in a way that um, I guess it's.
Say, any use in PC or in the future, if it's not a church, buildings over forty thousand of our key need conditional use. Anything over two hundred parking spaces need conditional use. So for the most part, any change to this property would probably require a condition.
Conditional use. So we have some control over the future, what, what would happen.
Right. And I, I guess my question, just looking through how R one is used, just because the, if it's used as a church, it's like everything applies. The, the church can have that in R one. And I think I saw that in two different sections. If it's a church, it can have those different, those things don't apply to church use. And I know, yeah.
The forty percent is really by official use. So by right, it's twenty percent. So, you know, the expect, so it's permitted, forty percent is permitted, but we're requiring under step of the church coming and paying a condition use. So uh, so that's yet another reason for PC zone.
Well, wherever you stand, Lindsay.
It's so, right now, I'm, I don't have the information that I feel comfortable moving it forward. If everybody else here does, it doesn't necessarily matter. So I'm going to be a no vote if it goes to a vote. I don't feel like I have the information. So um, if you want to call a vote.
Okay.
That's where I am.
And that's why we're a group and we can do that. So hopefully you can get your information. Fair enough. We, there's other meetings that they're going to go before. And you can, you know, we can move forward. I will, uh, I will say, I think, you know, for, for the step that they want to go forward, um, I would, I would like to recommend it. Um, what's everyone else on the board? We can make a recommendation and vote on it.
Well, we're, there's not voting. Uh, I'm in favor of it.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Yes, please.
All right, I'll make a motion that we recommend the zoning change to allow for the entire property to be rezoned to PC. Plan commercial pursuant to E B Walsh's review letter dated June twenty seven, twenty twenty three and the McMahon letter, review letter dated June fifth, twenty twenty three.
All right, now have a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
All righty. Oh, you've got a green light. Go ahead. And you have a, you have a, a young lady to try to convince. There you go.
And if you have the questions, get them to us.
Yeah, I'm gonna. Perfect. Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right. Next up. Eagleview Town Center, Phase Four, Lot Three, Laminary, Final Land Development Plan. And I see for the Hankin Group, we have Mr. Fisher. How you doing? Thank you.
All right, so. Do you want to wait?
Uh, he stormed off as soon as he saw you.
I saw that. I have that effect on.
I just, just came on as an expert, so.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Yep. Do you want me to just wait seven minutes?
Um, go ahead. I'm sure he would rather us move forward.
I know that he, so I'm not asking for anything tonight.
Okay.
How about that? Right? So we'll start off there. So what I thought I'd do is, um, I do, there are some new planning commission members. Since the last time I was here, I thought I'd just give a little bit of a recap, kind of show the next steps that I'm heading into. Okay?
Yep.
All right, so is everybody familiar with Eagleview?
Yep, yes, we are.
All right, I will actually have to put my glasses. Eagleview Boulevard is in the like southeastern corner of this and Route one hundred. Uh, runs in the north south direction, just off the edge of this, this page here. What you see kind of highlighted in the middle, that's what we came in for. I'm going to say probably three years ago now for through conditional use. Town Center Two, we're actually out there building it, parts of it right now. Uh, so basically it starts along Pennsylvania, on Pennsylvania Drive, and it carries all the way through Constitution. And out to Eagleview Boulevard. We're, we're really extending Constitution through this new development. Uh, we did go through the conditional use process and there've been certain standards that have been set as far as the type of development it would be. Um, the idea is really it's an intermixing various uses. And the idea of bringing, creating this, the Constitution Drive before was really the sixty foot wide asphalt, massive asphalt road. And in a cul-de-sac right at the top of the hill. We're carrying that through, we're cutting out the extra asphalt, turning it into a boulevard, whole beautification, right? The idea is to make, make some of these office spaces much more desirable that are up there. Bringing activity into this part of Eagleview. I'd say this part of Eagleview before was really kind of. Viewed more commercial, industrial, not. Not, not a destination type of place. By taking this boulevard through and linking it around, we're making this, bringing in this destination type of environment. Derek, can you jump to the next one? This is a, a three, this was also part of our, our conditional use application. Uh, so if you stood, so. The intersection down in the lower right hand corner, it's Pennsylvania and Eagleview. Okay, so Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania Drive. If you look at that, you really, on the southern side is Phase Two, that is a, an eighty-two unit building. On the northern side, the idea was to start turning it into, it's a combination of. Phase one, phase three, phase four. But if you start there, kind of driving on Constitution Boulevard. It, it starts off as a village, right? These ten unit manor homes, you come up, and then if you see the thirty unit building. That building starts to transition more into the corporate areas. And that thirty unit building, we did, agreed to design that as a passive house. And actually, we, that building's under construction now. I'll show you an image of it. Um, we are target, we are looking to take that one hundred percent off the grid. We put a uh. We designed a solar canopy in the parking area, so people actually will not have electric bills when they live in that building. Um, and then as you continue. Over, and then you, you, as you continue kind of, I'll say east on Constitution Driving, uh, the two buildings, that's Phase Four. Um, they're multi-story apartment buildings. And then on the, the northern, right where underneath where it says Terrace Talking, that is a, a multi-story office building. So this was, this was kind of, this was the vision. Derek, can you, we'll just jump to the next one. And then, uh, this is an image from a couple of weeks ago. This is looking on this new Constitution Drive extension. Down through our project, the building that's on the, the tall building on the left-hand side. That's out on Pennsylvania Boulevard or Pennsylvania Drive. Um, that's where our clubhouse is. And then right behind it, you can see our pool and poolhouse area. And then the buildings, uh, what I called the village area, that's what we call our manor homes. They're basically uh, ten, mix of ten and twelve unit buildings. That they're designed to look like manor homes, right? It's more like estates. It's an architectural, I mean that in, in like an architectural term, right? So that when. Derek, can you jump to the next one? I'm not sure. Yeah, there you go. So that now the, the porches aren't complete on the front of the buildings. Uh, the railings aren't up. They, if you look all the way down at the end, you can actually see the railings up, but the ones that are close, the railings aren't on yet. But it's, they're designed to, to actually look like a big estate rather than. Ten apartments, right? So that's what I meant by manor houses.
Can you go back and slide? Where's the passive house?
It's not in this image, it's underneath us.
It's in here, it's in here.
It's actually, yep, it's right there. So what we, um, basically what we have right now. You, this is the passive house image right here. So you can see the architecture starts to change. As we transition more into the corporate area and the passive house actually looks different. And we, we wanted the passive house to stand out and look different. It's as much of a marketing component. Using the architecture, architecture for marketing as well, right? So yes, that's, that is the, the passive house. Parking for this building is located in the rear and that's where the solar canopy. Over the parking area is located.
Four stories here.
Correct. Yeah, and then if you, okay, so then this is, this is Phase Four, this is the. The two uh, multi-story. Apartment, apartment buildings, right? So Eagleview Boulevard is down on the, on the bottom of the page, Constitution Boulevard. Is going up, and if you look, you can see the bou, how the boulevard starts to take shape. So today, the boulevard is just sixty feet wide of asphalt. We are actually, we're installing the boulevard components as part of the, this, the first phase is part of the portion that's under construction. Uh, we just need Pico to work with us a little bit better and get some utility lines relocated and we'll get that completed. Uh, when we went through the conditional use, we actually pulled the cul-de-sac back. And abandoned a portion of it, brought. I'll say made the, the kind of the cul-de-sac bulb area smaller. So that we do have a bus shelter there and a pull-off area for, for Septa. Uh, but the idea with this is that these two buildings would be more corporate geared, meaning. When you drive down Eagleview Boulevard, everything are, we got three, four, five story office buildings. These buildings will be four-story buildings that are, are from an architectural standpoint. More geared towards the office look than our village component, which is on the other end. And Tara, if you jump to the next one. This is, this is a very sketchy kind of image. We're, we're definitely. We're up to our eyeballs in figuring out the architecture of these buildings. Um, certainly the area in between the two buildings are something that we're spending a lot of time studying. It's a place that we want, we want to have a lot of activity. And if you look up, you, at the, on the upper floors, you can see this roof can, canopy up that's up there. So when we were going through and building or designing the passive house, uh, we figured that. Just the shape of the building, two additional units worked out well, right? You go, when you start to design. Of the project, you, you make your best estimates, right? So we came back to the township and we took two units out of this. So those are actually upper floor canopies and we increased. The density in the passive house. Makes sense? Okay. Uh, but these are our, those upper areas, balcony areas will be, become very desirable. For this project, for this phase or component of the project. And then I also wanted to show you the, because uh, we are submitting. Friday with this plan. So this is a, uh, the corner, Route one hundred's running in the north south direction on the right-hand side. Across the bottom of the page is uh, Eagleview Boulevard. So this and Constitution's on the, on the, uh, yes. On the left-hand side. So this is the, the uh, next component of the Town Center Project here. It's a very prime corner. I'd say it's probably one of the most prominent locations in Eagleview. Right? We're right at the intersection of one hundred and Eagleview Boulevard. It's our gateway. So. We do want the building uh, located at that corner, at that intersection. And a multi-story office building. And Tara, if you flip over, I get, have a, this is, uh, this is what we're looking at from a, from a rendering standpoint of what the. We did put a, we put a bend in the building. Um, certainly that we've, there's a lot of glass and. Concrete as it relates to the siding exterior as it finishes. And then Tara, if you take one more. This is the, as if you're standing in the parking, looking at the building. So. In jet, that's, that's a, that's a very high level. Um, next time I come back, so I did get a review letter on faith on the multifamily. Next time I come back, I actually have review letters on that and this, and this lot here. Uh, we do not have a tenant. But it, we are market. It will be developed simultaneously, but not constructed. I shouldn't, I shouldn't even say that because it really depends on, on the market. Yep, and there is a difference between developing a property and constructing a property.
So you, you had mentioned like that, uh, I guess Phase Two is that you use the word destination, but it's all. Residential, right? So unlike Eagleview that we know of, it's mixed use.
Eagleview as a whole, I'll say is mixed use, and this really does a, a much better job of bringing those mixes together.
So when I think of mixed use, I think of like the restaurants and.
Yeah.
Um, shopping and residential.
Yep, and this, and uh, the way we have this set up is that on the. Uh, I'm going to come back to that, but we have, we have the, the two multi-story buildings set up so that we can bring activities into there. So that's why we have this huge courtyard in between the two buildings. So that we can bring activities into that location because it is further away.
National or resident activity versus community activity.
Community activity.
So, okay, so like I'm thinking I was just at, um, enjoying the concert in the park last week.
Great.
Or the week before, um. Like that kind of thing where you're, it, it.
Well, we have, I don't think that we'll have big concerts like that, but smaller bands possibly. So the idea, so. Let's say that you are an office user, right? So there's, when people say mixed use. Mixed use doesn't mean that you have to have three different uses in a single building, right? Because not, not every building functions, you can't function a building well that way. You know, not to say, to say, I want to have a, a restaurant on the first floor, an office on the second floor, residential on the third floor. It, it doesn't work.
Sure.
Okay? But to say that you're, you know, have your community set up so that you have residential across the street from your office. That's mixed use and that works, and it works for multiple reasons. Right? So really what you're doing is you're, you're improving the health of that community. So. If you're an office user and you want to locate in Eagle, let's say on Constitution Boulevard. What's your biggest concern? Your employees. Right? How do you get your employees to say, yep, we're coming into Eagleview? Well, your employees need a place to live, right? Your employees are your talent, your employees are your business. Your employees want activities, your employees want trails, your employees want to be able to walk and go get something to eat, right? So if you build this community that has all these various uses. Now you've created something that's sustainable. Right? And it's going to continue to be sustainable because you've created the place that people want to be. If you say, I just want to have an office park, well, that's not sustainable.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, because I didn't see, it, it didn't feel like, you know, Eagleview original, O G, O G Eagleview. So I didn't know if that was the intent or if you saw that in the future, um, you know. With restaurants and do you, because you called it a destination, it made me think of O G Eagleview, um. But I didn't, I didn't quite see that. Yeah, so that's why I was asking that question. I understand the value of those things and. Um, because I value Eagleview, O G, that's what I'm going to call it now. Um, but yeah, I just was curious if that, if that was the intent. Either down the line or, or within this, if there was going to be attractions or where you brought community together, not just residence.
I do see that we will have events in here, yes. What those events are yet. I don't know. We have to, they, they have yet to be determined. Um, we do have a, I'll call a town manager. Right? That, that helps with events. It's a Hankin employee, right? Our marketing people. Not only do they set up our events for Eagleview, we also set up our events to down in Downingtown at River Station. And so we're always um, hosting activities and bringing activities because. Because we do look at it more on that holistic approach.
But there are no, there's no re, additional retail or, or restaurants that are coming into this town center too.
No.
I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
The. So after you, now you're in the middle of the passive house construction. Went through all the energy modeling, all that. You, I was excited to hear about it and I think I said to somebody from the company that was here at some point. You're going to be a different company, you're going to be a different builder. When you get through your, your passive house. And so my question is, have you, do you have intentions to apply some of the things you've learned?
Always.
Right?
So I would tell you.
New assemble, I would assume that you, you'd actually, I know when it happened to me, we never built the same way again and all of our assemblies changed. The consultants changed, everything kind of changed a little bit. Doesn't mean you have to shoot for the hoop and, and get the certification, but. My question is, you know, I'm looking at the glass building. Is there like any, you know, bird safe facade considerations? Like there's a lot of things that would come from. Going through a passive house that would make you think differently. And I'm, I'm just asking you as a company, so.
From a. I think every time you uh, make a shift, it makes you think differently, right? So whatever, fifteen years ago, we said, all right, every building we build is going to be lead, right? That was, that was the stand, that was the cutting edge standard then, right? And even today, people still do not be, build lead because it costs more money, right? And not only do we do it, but we also get the certifications and, right? Um, passive house. Yes, uh, we, we made a commitment to it. Um, we're doing it. And are we learning from it? Yes. Have we learned everything? Not yet, because really where we are from a construction standpoint is the foundations are in. The foundations, the walls. We don't even have plumbing, plumbing stubbed into the first floor yet. Plumbing, it's like, it's stubbed in, but it's not to the units, right? So have we learned everything yet that we expect and look now? Exact, so the, so we do, we do the blower door tests on. On all of our products. We, so that was one thing with lead that we learned was the value of the blower door test, right? So the below, if, if.
Lead requirement though.
But it, talk, it was uh, a tremendous value that it brings to the building.
Sure.
Right? So. From an energy efficiency standpoint, and it's basically you, you seal everything off, you put a fan on it, you create a back, and you say, all right. Does this thing hold, right? And it, and it was this thing. Does this thing hold, right? And it, and it was this thing, are you leaking air through your walls or not? And so yes, as far as I thought, as far as legal, you had to do a couple of random sampling. But we do a lot more. And as far as passive house, it's, it's even, I think you have to test every.
It's like ten times different airtime.
Right, right. So. But it does, it, it, one, you know, if you have leaks, right? Whether it's water, whether it's air, um, none of which, which you want in your building. So that was something that, that was something we learned then and we, and has carried through. And we are constantly learning with the passive house and it's going to carry through.
Just a quick question for the office building. You probably won't construct it till you have a tenant lined up, correct?
That's correct.
Just kind of, yeah, I mean, why build a building and let it? And we don't need a building sitting there empty.
No. No, nobody, uh, that's the worst thing for everybody is an empty building, right? Um, when it makes you look like you have a failed development, right? Which is something that we would, we would not do. Um, but it is a good corner. And it's really, like I say, when I say it's, I think our most prominent corner in Eagle View. Um, for a, you know, a forty, forty plus or minus thousand square foot office building. That's the site for them.
It's a good location.
It is. And, um, and to, to somebody's question earlier, we are targeting healthcare.
Do you have a vague, like a vacancy in your buildings percentage right now?
Yeah. So as from an office standpoint. Yeah, we're in the low, uh, we don't, I, um, our occupancy level is in the low eighties, right? If you look at Chester County as a whole, it's in the sixties, right? Part of that comes down to, you always have to make sure that you keep your development better than everybody else's. I believe that we keep Eagle View better than everybody else's, and that's why our occupancy is higher, right? So, but yes.
That's, that's better than I thought you were going to say. Would it sprang back up after twenty one?
Um, we did not lose tenants during COVID. Uh, we've been fortunate, we have, I mean, don't say, excuse me.
They didn't show up. They still paid rent.
Everybody lost tenants, right? And yes, if you drive through, there are some buildings that the parking lots are empty. But fortunately for us, they have a long-term lease, so. Yeah. And now we're starting to see office users are bringing people. I mean, office users have brought people back a year ago. Um, but now it's, now the question becomes more of, are you, are you working from home on Mondays and Fridays? Are you three days a week, right? So what's, what's your schedule? And if you're three days a week, well, you still need a place in the office, right? So I think there's, there's going to be some learning that goes on there as far as how much space can you, people are downsizing. And how much space can you downsize in order to still achieve your goals? With your employees. I mean, so if everybody's working three days a week, well, there's the one day when everybody's, you got a problem. Right? So maybe, maybe the people are going to some form of, well, you work three days this week. And you have off two days and the next week you work two days and you're, so there's going to be, there's going to be adjustments and I don't think that we're done learning from the work from home.
Quick question, um, for phase four, um, all of the residents combined, how many units in addition?
So you, you may because there was a lot of confusion as far as our plans go, as far as the number of units, a hundred, was it a hundred and, um, It's two less. It's, it's a hundred and twenty, do I have those numbers right, Dan? Okay. It's a hundred and twenty-six units because we stole the two.
A hundred and twenty-six.
And put them over in the passive house unit in the buildings.
That in, in all of those buildings.
Oh, how many units total overall? Three sixty-four?
Three sixty-four?
Yeah.
So it's passive house, manor house, what, rattled them off for me.
Okay, so.
Uh, if you, yeah, Tara, if you just jump back, there you go. This is a great.
So what's, this is a ver, I mean, talk about a variety of building types. And giving, giving a variety of choices for people to live. Um, if you start on Pennsylvania Drive, that's, uh, on the left-hand building, that's a four-story building, has garage parking underneath of it, eighty-two units.
You have a nickname for that one?
Neil.
No, I, when I don't, that's, uh, I don't have, I don't have a nickname, yes. It is, it's approved, it's ready to go and, um, really, it's a market, it, it's a market timing now for us.
It is, uh, you know, I'm, I'm actually, I am anxious to start. When I say me, me personally, if you forget market conditions or anything like that. I'm anxious to start it because I believe that it really transforms Pennsylvania Drive. Right? From a develop, as from a, from a, a development perspective or a planning perspective, looking at what Pennsylvania Drive is and, yes.
We tend to build that one before you build out the, the newer.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that's our, that will be our next building. I'd like to say that we will start it in September, but it could very easily, we may wait till spring. Um, there's, there's definitely changes that are occurring in the residential market and and, uh, interest rates and financing and everything, so. But that will be our next building. So, so that's the eighty-two unit building. As you cross the street, that, that corridor building, the tire circling, so down the first floor is our clubhouse. And then on the upper floors are residential units. And even on the first floor, there's, I think, four residential units. No, no, no garage parking in that building. And then the manor homes. So those all have garage, so they, so you saw the image of them in the front. In the rear, they have garages. So they're really more like a, like a townhouse, right? Than they are an apartment, right?
But they're ten units.
But they are ten units.
How many are there total?
There's eighty-eight of those.
Eighty-eight units.
Eighty-eight units. And then there's the passive house. Now this says thirty units because this was our, but that's really thirty-two units. And then there is the hundred and twenty-six units on constitution.
Tara, is there a chance that you could email us that image? It's really useful. It's the first time I've actually seen it make sense.
Oh, yeah. It's a, this is a, this is a great planning document.
Really helpful.
I mean, I reckon it's a probably different number of bedrooms each. But the approximate total by small.
Uh, as far as number of people?
Yeah.
So. No, but I could look into that for you for the next time I come in. So I would, so here, uh, so we just had a lot of conversation about parking and things like that with the church, right? Um, we do parking studies all the time on our projects and Eagle View in general. So township ordinance is two and a half. We went through conditional use, twenty percent reduction makes it down to two. In reality, we park at about one point three parking spaces per unit. Not, so we have, so in general, we do sixty percent two bedrooms, forty percent one bedrooms. So we, that's our general makeup and mix of our complexes. And there's always outliers, but in general, uh, so I would use that. I mean, that's a good rule of thumb for what we park in Eagle View. And you know what Eagle View is.
Do you, do you for, for first deal of you and also for this, do you usually just max your, use all of your sixty-five percent impervious? Is that like, is that just typical for a developer or, or?
Uh, so listen, uh, this has a, a tremendous amount more density. That we are not, not maxing out.
Correct.
Right? Because we looked at it in a way to say, what do we think is a good, we'll build a good community. So, no, I don't look at it from a densities, a density standpoint, nor do I look at it from an impervious standpoint. I look at it from, uh, how does it, how does the building function and is it going to operate correctly? And if, if you're asking me that question as it relates to the church, my response would be, where do you want the parking? Right? And it is, because at the end of the day, you want it to function the way it's designed to function. And if they're having a problem, um, give them the tools to fix it. That's because you want that to be successful. You want, you want your, when, when you have an established use, you want that use to be successful.
As long as it's respectful.
Totally. One hundred percent. Right.
That got everybody kind of caught up. Yeah.
A lot of that was trying to, yeah.
All right. So final plan approval. I'm kidding. I haven't even submitted the office building yet. So, uh, no, like I said, I'm not looking for anything tonight. But this was a big, this was a big recap, basically.
Yeah.
Where we started, what we've done, where we're going. Um, what I'm coming in for over the course of the next couple of months. Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Okay.
Awesome.
Alrighty, that's everything on our agenda.
No, it's really.
Uh, the announcements. On July tenth, Board of Supervisors, seven thirty PM. July eleventh, Community Day Committee Meeting, seven PM. July twelfth, Historical Commission Meeting, seven thirty, Cab Walter House. Seven twenty, Environmental Advisory Council, regular meeting at seven PM. Seven twenty-six, July twenty-six, Zoning Hearing Board, seven PM. So to discuss one twenty-four wagon trailway, rear yard variance. On August second, our next planning commission meeting, seven thirty. August seventh, Board of Supervisors Workshop Meeting, twelve PM. August fourteenth, Board of Supervisors Meeting, seven thirty PM. Also, on August twelfth is Community Day, so everybody can look into that. And before I open to public comment, I do also want to welcome, we have two new ex officio members joining us tonight. Uh, William McLaughlin and Mike Freed down on that end. I want to welcome both of you to the board. And, uh, your input will be greatly appreciated. And with that, uh, we'll open it up to public comment. Anyone have any good for the good of the planning commission? If you could come up and state your name and where you live and.
Rich Segal, Harsha Drive, Chester Springs. I was here with many of my neighbors in April and we had a very large group. And it was deemed very difficult to hold a meeting. And in fact, we were asked if we wanted to go on with the meeting and inform the folks outside what was going on or postpone. Uh, we said postpone. Um, you said you would reschedule as soon as possible at a larger venue. My question is, well, there's more to this story. The next week at the Board of Supervisors, I asked the question if the meeting has been rescheduled. I was told it wasn't, it was canceled because there were no agenda items. So my question is, how is this possible? To cancel a meeting that you said you were going to postpone? And not disenfranchise the community?
Uh, well, I will answer it my own way. Because of the large crowd we had, we could not handle them in this facility. At that point, we had one thing on the agenda that night, had nothing to do with what the crowd was here for. That person was willing to table his, his agenda till he got, went further ahead. Then the next week, the township realized they had an issue and they held the meeting at this school. Which a large venue and a lot of people showed up. Majority of the people on this board were either at that meeting or Zoom or read the minutes from that meeting and realized the people that were there and the people that were here that night, what their concern was. Um, from there, uh, I don't see a reason why we would have rescheduled because we didn't have anything on our agenda. At this point, we are back with an agenda, we're back with open comment.
So public comment is not an agenda item.
No, publicly, n- not if it is not on our agenda. If there is an issue on our agenda that is addressed, then.
Did I ask then, when you do have something where you're changing a commitment made in public that you put it on the website?
Uh, yes, uh.
Right. As I say, when you do it in private, it disenfranchises the community.
Okay. What do you mean by private?
Well, it was never announced that the reason, um, there is more of an explanation. What you're telling me is you canceled the meeting because you believe you heard what was going to be said at the commission, uh, the, the, um, Planning Commission Meeting at the Board of Supervisors Meeting, so you didn't need to have a meeting.
I'm going to say, and this is me, and this is that we, I feel that the people were there. Um, the reason the meeting was canceled, because this room was over capacity. And unless everybody would have left and decided who was going to stay and leave, then the meeting would have went on. But at that point.
Understood. But what you told us at the time, it was being postponed, not canceled, and you would work at, to reschedule as soon as possible. That was the commitment that was made to us.
Okay.
And if the decision had been, we're not going to reschedule, you, you, you gave us the option of proceeding with the meeting, except we weren't going to let everybody in. Right? That was an option.
Okay.
We had known that you were going to cancel it, maybe we would have done something differently.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of things we would and could do differently.
All I'm asking is, if you're going to make a decision that's different than what you tell the public, that should be a public announcement that you're, you're doing that.
All right. Well, then I'll tell you our apologies for the misunderstanding that you feel was there. I felt that we handled everything appropriately. Um, we have people. Okay, there.
I see, I see. I, I understand your, I understand your comment. I guess the question that night when we said, well, we schedule instead of cancel, we opted to reschedule. But then it was, the decision was made that the person, the one person who was on the agenda could hold his, me, his stuff until another time. Did, was it communicated publicly then that it would in fact not be rescheduled? Okay. So was that ever posted, that the agenda item applicant withdrew? And so there was no reason to reschedule because there's nothing to review.
Okay. Well, again, I apologize for any misunderstanding and hopefully we can keep our communication open and clear. All right. Thank you. Any other public comment? How you doing? Yeah. Please state your name and where you live. Thank you.
My name's Chris Engel and, uh, I live off of Valley View in Chester Springs. And, you know, I'm part of the large group that's concerned about what may or may not happen, Lineville Station Farm. Um, pretty much over the last three months. My wife and I have tried to make an attempt to hit every committee. The environmental, historical, zoning, Board of Supervisors, and yourselves, so that we can better understand process. And to listen and so I, I have a couple of questions if that's okay, so that I can understand about your process. And that will make it easier in the future, so we don't waste your time and things like that. So my understanding from the planning commission is issues comes from the planning commission like today with the, the change of zoning. And then you may or may not recommend to the Board of Supervisors, and then they in turn vote. And that's where the actual decision to go forward or not gets made. Is that, do I have that correct?
We are an advisory board.
That is correct. That is correct, yes.
Yep.
When does the public get an opportunity to give its comments on things that you are considering recommending prior to you actually making the recommendation?
Uh, I am not sure, I mean.
Maybe if I make a, can I?
Go ahead.
And, and maybe I can address Mr. Siegel too. You know, as a, uh, the planning commission, where it advisory board, we only meet when there's something on the agenda to make a decision on. So if there's nothing on the agenda, we don't meet.
I understand.
In contrast, the Board of Supervisors meets every month.
Right.
And they have public comment, but they address things that are on the, you know, that are presented as, um, you know, uh, uh, projects that they need to make decisions on, so.
Right, but if, if do you feel that there's any benefit to having the public speak its mind on an issue that's for your body? So I'll, I'll use an example, so today you were talking about the church and, you know, changing from R one to P C. And, and they, you know, they put up, it's not even a sketch plan, it's just their idea, to give you an idea. Um, what if somebody from public saw that and said, wait, 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 wait?
No, that, that was submitted, they did submit a plan.
Okay, so they.
That was not a sketch plan, if that's what you, that, that was submitted.
Right, but when does the public, before you say, yes, this, this sounds like a good idea.
Right.
When does the public get to actually say, wait, I have questions about this? You know, when, when, how does that, how does that process work? Um, because we know that right now you don't have anything before you from, uh, Audubon. Okay, so there's not, it's not going to be on the agenda, because you don't have anything before you. But if and when Audubon does present something, that would be before you, then you'll have a meeting about what Audubon has presented. But like if I had, wanted to comment about what was going on at the church, like I, I get to comment now, but I didn't get to comment on what I just saw.
Right.
So when do I get to comment prior to that so that you get to hear what we're saying and possibly take that into consideration, because maybe there's a question. I mean, you guys are great at asking lots of questions, but maybe there's something you hadn't considered that we as the public had considered. Case in point, it's like, well, they're, they're asking for two R ones to go to P C, why not do one? And keep the other one with the little, little strip? As, as, you know, why, why not make that one P C and make the other one R one? Like, like, it's just a question, I don't know the relevance of that, but I mean, I, I couldn't ask that question at the time that you were making your decisions to recommend. When would I get to make, how do I get to speak to you before you render your decisions to make recommendations? That's all I'm asking.
It is a good question. Scott, I mean, basically, everything's on the website and basically, um, well, I think.
I guess you would go to the township.
That item is presented, there's public comment after each item.
Yeah, we didn't do that tonight, okay? Did I not do that tonight?
After each agenda item, there's the opportunity for public comment, which obviously.
Oh.
That didn't happen.
Okay, well, then, to be honest with you there, I made a mistake tonight.
Okay.
And yes, and that'd be. So that would.
And the item's been presented, but you're right, we usually do that, we usually do. Does anyone have, right, with before we vote, we usually do do that. So that means the answer, I think, is that both at these meetings, when there's an agenda, and also at the supervisors' meetings, the public opportunity to comment is then, although obviously depends on the time. And that meeting that you're talking about, there was a lot of people that probably would have liked to speak.
I'm not, I'm not talking about that meeting, I'm, I'm just saying, going forward.
Sure.
Like, because like tonight, like I said, I, I had a question, but there was, there was not an opportunity for me to ask that question about something that was before you tonight. And so I didn't, I didn't know, because i- it seems like every committee works under different.
Yeah, you're right, I, I made a mistake on that tonight, I will admit to that.
But understand that the supervisors' meeting at public comment, there's comment about the agenda items, then there's open comment, you can come in and say anything you want, you could.
Well, I have.
I, I'm intimidated, I'm intimidated by that guy standing in the back of the room with a gun in his holster. But that's what, that's, that's what's great about America, but there's a place and time for it, and I think we've explained it, and you're right, we missed it tonight.
Right, and that, that's why it's like, okay, I'm trying to understand, well, this is what this, I, I don't want to ask planning commission questions at a zoning hearing meeting and vice versa. And so this is part of my educational process of understanding, this is how we do what we do.
But, um, but the thing is, you got to do it right now. And when, and if we did hold that meeting back in April, everyone that came, the three hundred people or however many people would have had the chance to do that, so you're, it's actually, there are two opportunities, aside from our little mishap. There are two, there's two opportunities at the, at the supervised meeting and at these meetings. And really, you know, when you, you can pretty much speak on anything, right? I mean, at both meetings.
Anything, yeah.
And so like, there is a lot of opportunity that way, you just gotta, you gotta be there.
And, and my apologies again, because you are right and I was wrong, and, uh, I haven't had a meeting in a couple of months and.
It's out of practice.
This is, this isn't my normal, uh.
It's just that. I'm, I'm just a, a man of curiosity, and so that's all I.
No, it's a great question, thank you.
Well, I was just gonna add that we do, Tara, you have sent us letters that you've received, um, about projects as well.
We got one today.
Um, so when there's public, public comment is something different, but when information is shared uh, to the township, it's also passed on to us as it relates to agenda items. So we're able to receive those letters and emails from community members ahead of coming in here, because we receive all of our information the week before. So we have time to review materials, including communications from community members. So that's another, it's not public comment like you're talking about, but it's another way for the community members to communicate with us ahead of agenda items. So I just want to offer that, because that's been helpful for me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's actually a pretty cool outlet too, if you have something you put together that you want to get to the township. We'll see, and the supervisors will see it in four of these meetings.
I mean, a lot of the time, like, getting to see this, you know, it's like, oh, wait.
Right.
Now, now I see a picture, now I understand. Now I'm starting to learn the process, now I can actually ask a constructive question as opposed to a not constructive question with, so that's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, yeah.
Perfect.
Great.
Did you have another question?
Um.
This is the last time we're gonna ask your question this year, so it better be good, I'm just kidding.
Um. Not, not formally, so.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
It's pretty awesome that he asked that question.
Hello, is there everybody?
Good evening.
Thank you for letting me talk, my name is Greg Thompson. I live in the Fairfield's, which is in West Pikeville, just down the road from here. And I've been to a number of these meetings and I've heard a lot of things said, and I'm not going to reiterate on that, there'll be a lot more things said in the future. But I just was, while he was talking, I kind of punched something up on Google, you know, you can't live without Google these days. But this has, this is from Purdue University. Planning commissions prepare communities for growth and change. Their review helps citizens have input and helps county governing boards make informed decisions. Thought that was kind of interesting. When I decided to get up and speak tonight, it was mainly to state my name and where I live, and I was going to state that I'm opposed to the mega proposed warehouse on Lineville Station Farm. But as I listened to the other presentations, I realized there's a certain level of scrutiny that you guys put everything through, and that impressed me. And I'm counting on that same scrutiny when it comes to this upcoming Lineville Station Audubon proposal. And, uh, I know that you guys are all going to do the right thing. So thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
My name's Denise Malzahn, I live in the Bridlewood Development off Davis Road, also in West Pikeville Township, but I just have a couple of real quick questions. Um, for the Lineville Station Farm proposed development, the only reason, is the only reason that the, um, Audubon Development Co- Corporation would have to come to the planning commission, would that be to ask for a small zoning change that they need for a small parcel of the property, I believe?
Well, as of right now, there's nothing in front of us from Audubon.
Right.
I mean, that's really the only thing I can say, exactly why or where.
Okay, alright, that's.
Speculation, but the process is not just zoning, it's land development, it's all those issues, how big the buildings are. It's like you heard us talking about.
Yeah.
Uh, the use of the land variances, waivers of, uh, things there, they would have to, we, we typically just review all that, give our, our input as that, it changes the the, uh, plan, the, the applicant goes back, comes back with a revised plan until we get to something we can agree to, or we can't agree to. So if you're familiar with the, uh, uh, Y M C A that just happened, that was, you know, we put this, the Board of, we reviewed that and then sent it to the Board of Supervisors, they reviewed it, there was a lot of public comment and a lot of public pushback against that. Uh, pickleball courts, and they put a lot of restrictions on that project, and they decided not to go forward with it. With the Y M C A, so.
Okay.
It's kind of how the process works, you know, they want something, we say, well, you can have this, or, you know, we'll agree to this. Um, but the, uh, ordinances are all in place and they have to follow those ordinances when they want something different. Then, then that's when, when the, uh, goes to the supervised decision is made, you know, as to whether we'll allow that or not allow that.
Alright, thank you.
We always consider the, in, the, uh, public's input on that, of course.
My only other question is, do we have any idea from Audubon Development, uh, when they, at this, do we have any kind of update on when that we think they might submit anything?
As of right now?
Nothing.
We have no information.
Okay, I'm trying to educate myself on the process too, so.
Yep, that's all we can do, right?
Yeah, yes, thank you very much.
Alrighty, thank you. Alright.
Anybody?
Any other comment? Questions? And with that? One more.
One more.
I have.
One more.
We saw a slim. Please state your name and where you live.
Hi, my name is Caroline Engel, I live at three forty-eight Valley View Lane, Chester Springs. Uh, two, I guess, questions, one is a question, one's a suggestion, idea, um, on the um, Cowery Chapel, uh, decision or, or discussion. One of the things I, I, you know, appreciate the concerns about impervious land, um, and pervious, you know, and the percentages and such, and so one of the things I was wondering is, when you have someone coming about parking spaces, um, is there ever a idea, suggestion, proposal to keep them as, um, create gravel spaces? So then, rather than having concrete, um, just having this more opportunity for the groundwater, you know, the water seeping.
First of all, our expert Steve here. Now, we would defer to our, well, our.
It's awful hard to ask for somebody that's going to church in high heels and funerals and weddings and.
True.
That, there are other pervious paving solutions out there, some more successful than others, but I'm sure Dan's got a great, great handle on that sort of stuff.
And that, that's an applicant decision here, um, uh, planning commission is more than, uh, willing and able to make those requests, the public can make those requests. Um, uh, for instance, the Hankin Group does a lot of, um, uh, pervious pavement, um, solutions in some of their parking areas throughout, throughout Eagleview. But that is definitely an option and, and is utilized in different, different, different locations depending on the use.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep.
Um, the second question, uh, okay, so with the, I'll say Lineville Station Farm property, whatever we call it, um, but there's, as I understand, there's like five parcels, I believe, to that entire piece, uh, that's under, um, under agreement of sale, and, um, if there was an opportunity, say this, the agreement of sale falls through between the school district and Audubon, Audubon doesn't meet their, um, requirements and such, falls through or whatever, um, who is there opportunity to have the, um, at least certain parcels of that entire, um, piece of, of land rezoned, for instance? Right now, we have, um, what, we are residential right up against, you know, R one, right up against this P I C, planned industrial, commercial piece of land. And is there opportunity to say, okay, the parcels that are closest to the residential, let's, you know, make that, I don't know what different zones there are, but in your planning, consideration of hey, let's make this, you know, not have residential right up against, or, or P I C right up against residential, you know, is there opportunity there? Who will we go to? How does that, something like that happen?
There's no transition between one and the other. What could possibly transition from one to the other, except open space? And there's no zoning for open space. Secondly, the school district owns a property, they have best interest in keeping the property at its highest value. So you would be causing a hardship to the school district by doing that, and we'd see them in court for the next century. Um, but Charleston Township, which is a different township, and other wealthy townships have tried to do that, and they've all lost. So you're back to the master plan zoning, that happens what Dennis wants every ten, ten years, and it's just, it was completed last year.
Right.
So that's, that's where you're at that. As far as defining them as five separate parcels, they're five separate tax parcels. Not to be confused with one, five separate land parcels. They are one land parcel belonging to the school district at this time. You're up, but your best opportunity, if the sale does not go through, is to be in front of the school board, not us.
Yeah, we're on that too, okay.
Sorry, sorry, Dennis.
That's okay.
That's a good, Mr. McLaughlin.
I worked for the school district a long time ago, a long time ago, so I just.
He knows some of the stuff that happened with all.
And I had bought the property as well.
But, okay.
Alright.
So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one more comment on my, my neighbor's question. Your long range plan, um, looks at that, um, um, Lineville Station Farm possibility as open space. It's identified as a potential for open space, unfortunately, it's not consistent with the zoning. I mean, do you, is there, is there a conflict there? I mean, you recognize that that would be desirable for the township. I don't know how you get there.
There's no zoning, there's, I don't know of a zoning district, the only zoning district I know that you can do that is called a historical agricultural zone. But I don't, I don't know how you get to that from here.
Well, all I'm saying is that the long range plan does list an option as open space for that property.
And with spot rezoning is so illegal, you can't, you can't, you've, the township has zoned it.
All, all I'm saying is if the long range plan has an option for that as being open space, how do you get there?
We're, we're an advisory board, I, I, I don't know, you would have to ask someone with a more legal, legal, um.
I contacted the conservation, uh, the various conserv- conservatory groups, Eleanor Moore. Those, those groups would be able to give you a lot of guidance on that, their websites would probably give you a lot of guidance on that. Because they've done it all over this, all over the county, and have been very successful at it.
Alright. Hey, alright, any other comment?
Oh, let's stay there.
Do you have? Uh, do I have a?
I'm like, really, I also live in Harshaw Drive, um, you know, and like my neighbors here, I, I am appreciative of everything I heard tonight and your level of rigor around the, with the good of our community and what this means when people are asking for stuff in production, so a couple notes, right, like, for example, more concrete, I'm due, I can't read what I wrote. More concrete of a couple spaces, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Or concrete of a couple spaces, maybe it's more than a couple spaces, it's, but it's parking spaces, I'd like you to consider, when and if the Audubon project does come before you, what the more concrete is of two million square feet. I'd use the same perspective, please, if you could. Right, on that one, other, like.
You, you.
But there's, there's nothing in front of us.
I understand, I understand that, it's just, if I have the opportunity to, back to, uh, Chris's point about when do we actually get the comment, and I'll be quick, I promise, I'll let you get out of here. Because I like this, but, uh, also the carbon footprint, carbon footprint of just a stat, three hundred ninety-four tractor spots, the tractor trailers that are coming out of those spots. Eighteen hundred parking spots, right, that carbon footprint as well, compared to the three cars of the family that has to take four cars, I agree with you, by the way, on that. Um, you know, the other thing, like the, uh, heard about mixed use with the Hankin Group and mixed use and the what we're talking about, how that does sustain the community, and I agree with that, I like it, I like the beautification idea. Obviously, you know, you compare that to the Lineville. Obviously, you know, you compare that to the Lineville. I guess that would be the trade center as well and. How that has any comparison to sustaining the community, right? Lastly, the O G. The O G, uh, what was it? O G Eagleview. I like that term too, which, let's think about if we can, the O G Chester Springs or the O G Chester County. What Lineville Trade Center would mean to the O G community that we live in. So that's all I ask. If, if and when it does come, hopefully it doesn't, please have that same perspective.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay. Uh, one more time, any more public comment? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Thank you.
Thank you.